Okay, seeing it's now 10 a.m. I will call this meeting to order and the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting into regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time we heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you take the role?
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
I'm here.
Chair Borges?
I'm here.
And I'll make note that Supervisor Howard is absent.
Thank you. Would you join me in a moment of brief reflection? Okay Supervisor Wilson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, to the nation, God, to the faithful, to the routine.
All right, introduction of any new employees. Do we have any new employees out there?
Yes Chair, we have some folks from Health and Human Services here today to introduce some new employees.
Good morning Board, Megan McGlasson. She heard pronouns. I am a program manager at Behavioral Health, and I am here to introduce two of our new employees. Diane Johnson is a part of our same-day crisis team, and she's rejoining us after a brief absence. And Rebecca Melvin is a new employee on our mobile crisis team, and she will be a certified peer support specialist.
Hello, I was born and mostly raised in Crescent City, Del Norte County, Klamath. Moved away for a time and I'm back now mostly for my parents, and I'm just very excited about this job being in Del Norte County. This is an awesome opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning Chair, Board. Dorothy Wadlow, I am Deputy Director for Social Services Branch at DHHS, and I have three new employees to introduce. I have Shannon Reed as an ICW for the Public Assistance Branch. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology and seven years' experience working with the public. So we're really excited to add her to our team. You want to say anything? I have Holly Moretti. She is a Social Services Aid for the Social Service Branch. Associate Degree in Social Science. She has four years' office experience as a manager, as well as 17 years with the Postal Service. Would you like to say anything? And I have Ruby Grobs. She is an ICW with the Public Assistance Branch. She has a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice. Eight years' previous experience as a social worker with Siskiyou County. So we're very happy to build our team up again. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome all of you.
Welcome.
All of them? Excellent. Counsel, anything to report at a closed session?
No Chair.
Okay. At this time, Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county, subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting. Any such items, seeing none, we will move on and receive brief reports, announcements relative to county Del Norte programs and projects. Supervisor Starkey, if you lead us off.
Thank you very much. Over the last couple of weeks, it's been fairly busy. I have attended the Fourth of July Committee Meeting. The grand marshal will be announced soon, as will the theme of the parade. While I can't give away either one of those, the theme has something to do with Redwoods. I'm going to give you a teaser. I attended the Grants TAC Meeting, the Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. In that meeting, we did ask for all departments to compile a list of what grants they currently have open, the progress of those grants, as well as provide us with some information with regard to what the holes in services are within their department, so that we can have a list of things, of grants that we might need to look at to be able to provide that funding, to provide those services to the community. We did discuss in that TAC meeting to reconsider a previous proposal. CSAC, the California State Association of Counties, has a grant program. So we did ask in that meeting to re-explore the opportunity, perhaps that we take advantage of that program. It does come at a cost to Del Norte County, but the cost, I believe, will outweigh the, or will be a benefit to the county. For $100,000, they perhaps will write six to seven grants, and we would get that back tenfold. I did attend the Komome event that put on by the City of Crescent City. I had the opportunity to participate in the Friday events inside the Cultural Center. I love working with the kids, and about 400 kids showed up for that event, and we were able to have a good time with them, but also teach them about emergency preparedness, and so that they are at least familiar with tsunamis, or earthquakes, or fires, and how to respond to those. I attended the Economic Summit put on by the Chamber of Commerce. It was an amazing event again this year. We had fabulous presentations from Sutter Coast Hospital, from the Talawa-Dani Nation, from the Elk Valley Rancheria, and the City of Crescent City. And I'm not just saying this because the city manager is sitting here in our audience today, but I will say the city is knocking it out of the park. They are doing a lot of great things. They are providing housing. They've got beachfront park going. They have their roads done. They're using their Measure S dollars. And I just am so very impressed with the work that they're doing, and your dance moves Eric needs some work though. I attended the Homeless Town Hall Meeting put on by Renell Brown and the Homeless Ad hoc. That was very informative about the progress that they're making with regard to the shelter, and all things that have to do with not only the shelter, but with the micro-village. Well-attended event, a lot of good questions, a lot of good feedback. So grateful for that. I attended the Fireworks Ad hoc Meeting. We are kind of getting in that finalization of the messaging that we want to make sure that we're consistent with as we put out not only to residents in Del Norte County, but also outside of our area, and how we're going to make sure that we are at least informing the people that like to come and visit here, that this year is going to look a little different. The Sheriff's Department is going to be setting up a command station down by South Beach, so there'll be that police presence there as well. But also, it's just, we need this to, we really need to make sure that we remind ourselves of what happened last year. And we don't want that again this year or any other future year. So we will get in that messaging out, I believe, May 1st or shortly thereafter. I attended the Health and Safety Family TAC Meeting, Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, and that one, we didn't know what to do, to be honest. I'm going to be completely honest. We kind of sat down and said, what is it that we need to work on? And the beautiful part of it is that it can be whatever it is that we want to work on. And so what we decided to do in that TAC meeting is to send out a very informal survey to the employees of Del Norte County who we think represent a very diverse population amongst our residents here, and trying to talk about where the gaps are that they would like to see for us to be able to have services, or activities, or whatever it is to promote safe and family, safe and healthy families here in Del Norte County. Again, I appreciate Renell Brown leading the way on that for us to be able to guide that, as well as our HR Director Carrie Vu. I attended the Quarter Two Middle Mile Advisory Committee, and while that's not necessarily a county event, I represent, I'm a representative for the state on that, but it definitely is going to be impacting rural communities. What's happening now, and the concern is, this construction needs to be finalized by the end of 2026, but Caltrans is not issuing the permits that we need in order to put the fiber in the ground. While Caltrans is saying, well, the joint partners are not getting the paperwork into us, we need to streamline that. And we made that message very clear at this meeting, that we all need to be on the same page and rowing our boat in that same direction. I think they heard us. We're going to have a special meeting in May to get updates from the community joint partners, so that we can find out where the holes are and what we need to do to get this project done. It's a billion-dollar project. We have an opportunity here for us to have high-speed internet throughout California, and I don't want rural counties who need it the most to be left behind, and that's often what happens. So we'll feed to fire and we'll keep that one going. I attended the Local Behavioral Health Board Quarter Two Meeting. That was very interesting, always great to hear updates from all over the state about what's happening with behavioral health. And finally, yesterday, I did attend a meeting with Addy Medum. One of, as anybody that has listened to me for any amount of time knows that I do care deeply about our seniors in this community, making sure that we provide services to keep our seniors in their homes as long as possible with dignity. And so I met with Addy Medum. They are lowering the cost of their monthly rate to really kind of match more about our income level here in Del Norte County. They are providing respite care now, so that will be available to them. And from that, it prompted us to decide to do our second, not second annual, because I did one in 2023, but an Elder Summit. So I will be organizing that temporarily. I'm looking at June 5th for that, so that I can pull all the players together who provide services for our elderly, so that we're giving that information to each other, we're working and coordinating together, so we're not working in silos. So there'll be more on that to come up, and that is my report.
Thank you Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so this is the last. I too attended the Economic Summit. It was well-attended. Presentations that really hit home for me. Were both by Senator McGuire, and also what the city is doing is very impactful to the entire community, and will make a big difference, especially in the housing areas, and also Sutter Coast, and the work that they're doing expanding their services to our community. Two of the things that caught me by surprise, though, that are absolutely necessary is, Sutter Coast is expanding their services. They're putting in a program called Empath, which will be 11 beds for mental health patients. That will allow them to be held for 24 hours and hopefully identify their issues, stabilize, and treat. On top of that, Senator McGuire gave information that Humboldt and Del Norte County, conjointly, even though I didn't know we were involved, has received the funding to open at Mad River, a 42-bed mental health facility. And that facility is intended to service both Humboldt and Del Norte County. What exactly that's going to look like, I'm not sure. What exactly that's going to help or impact us, but I know with the dollars that were pushed out for the development of locked or secure facilities, or other facilities for mental health patients that need long-term treatment, was one of the edicts that was pushed out by the governor several years ago, along with the funding sources. But our counties, especially the northern California counties, are too small for us to justify building a facility of significant size. We don't have enough patients that would fill those beds, but we do need beds. And so having that in conjunction with Humboldt and Del Norte is going to be an ideal fix for us, and exactly how that will fill it in, but I know the benefits on not having to send our mental health patients, those that need incarceration, those that need a long-term treatment, out of county so far, that they're away from any kind of supportive family contact, is going to be very helpful, especially if it's just down in Mad River. I attended the Humbley Festival Dinner. It was very well-attended. They raised a lot of money. Exactly how much money, I'm unsure, but they did raise some money for that project, and it was well-attended, and a lot of people throwing in and buying things and contributing. It was great to see. Attended a Solid Waste Management Meeting. Attended the homeless town hall meeting. It was well-attended. A lot of good questions asked. And then, of course, this Sunday was Easter, and I was at the Services Celebration of Christ Having Risen. And it was well-attended at our little local church here in Fort Dick, and it was a blessing to be able to see and to celebrate and to have that period of time. And the Pope, of course, passing was significant in the Christian, and how that comes out. But we wish him well, and I know that our prayers go out to him and to the church and for guidance. So that'll end my report. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Short?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I attended the North Coast DMS MAC Meeting and the Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting. Those were pretty routine. My two colleagues have already mentioned the ERF Town Hall. I just wanted to thank Renell and her team for putting on a well-organized and well-attended Town Hall Meeting for the ERF Homeless Shelter Project. Also attended the Fireworks Committee Meeting with Supervisor Starkey and that Safe and Healthy Families TAC that has already been talked about. So I will just cut my report short. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thanks Supervisor Short. And with that, I think we have enough time. We're going to drop down to item number nine, to General Government. Item number nine is to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-010, Resolution of the Board of Supervisors, Del Norte County, authorizing the transfer of the county's Rule 20A credits to the City of Crescent City as requested by city manager and the county administration officer. And since we have the city manager here, is there anything you'd like to add to that before we go on? Or do we have any questions from the board about it?
I don't have any questions. Did you want to come up Eric and talk about this?
Just give us a brief little overview of what's going on here.
Sure. What's that?
No dancing.
No, no dancing. Go on now. Well, just said she wanted to see a little bit more, or better moves maybe. So with this one, though, Front Street has been a dance for many years for this community. And so just a couple of slides with Front Street itself. So 10 blocks total, right? We're making our way down. So this is the first phase, second phase, third phase. We're ready to take on this last phase, and that's what's outlined here in pink. So this will be our next phase, which hopefully will be under construction probably late July, early August. With this phase, though, there are some power lines. So this black line represents the overhead power lines that are in this portion of Front Street, and that's really where this opportunity lies. And with the Rule 20 money that is out there, that actually was dedicated for this county and this city to help underground power in conjunction with a project just like this. So when you look at Front Street in total, not only do we have the street piece of it, but there's also some significant gateway wayfinding signs that will be incorporated within this project. If you look at it, though, if you look at the section, you can see just how intrusive those power lines actually are. And then if you try to put some wayfinding signs in it, it's just going to even draw your attention more to those power lines themselves. Same on the further section where we're looking at this gateway sort of arch piece of it. There really is a conflict with those power lines. And so with that, that's what we're here to talk about, is the city has our credits with the power company. It's just under $400,000 is what's been dedicated to the city. And then the county, our understanding is you guys have about 2.4 million. Those credits unfortunately are going to go away for both of us on June 8th. And so it's part of this project. We're looking at how do we take advantage of that opportunity to augment this project? And then how do we put ourselves in a position where we can utilize these funds before we just lose it? And so with that, we do have our city attorney Martha Rice. She's been taking the lead on exactly how we go about doing that. If the board would like that information, she can articulate that. It's creating an underground district. It's which the city's been doing the last couple of meetings, and then getting an estimate from the power company, notifying the property owners. All of those steps have to be taken in order to fully utilize this.
So with this 2.4 million, that's been collecting for how many years?
Gosh, I want to say that was put in place in 1967.
And so, you know, while 2.4 sounds like a lot, to do anything in the county, this is from, I watched your presentation to your city council last night, and my underst- And my understanding is this will take K Street in this area. Would it also then expand out beyond that?
It could. So we've created an underground district that expands a little bit beyond just the Front Street project. The Front Street project is going to be the active project, but then with the district boundaries, that'll actually include K Street up to Third, Third Street to H, and then H Street back to Front. In the future, we could actually use this funding to underground those lines as well as part of this now active project that could be expanded. We have until 2033, I believe, to fully utilize the funding.
So you don't have to expend them by June 8th, right? You just have to have a project in place before June 8th.
An active project.
Yeah, I wish you the very best of luck. I believe improvements to the city are improvements to the county. And so we don't have a current project earmarked for this, and so I'm very much for this and hope that you meet the deadline.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No, I just, my sympathy is because K Street's going to be a mess. I can't, I hate to see what's going to happen once you break that thing open because that, that, that road has been bad for decades.
For a long time with, with a lot of infrastructure.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's just been one wave after another on K Street. So, yeah, and, and I know Front Street from other projects, you know, pulling out the old redwood and all that other stuff that's deep down in there that collapses and causes us sinkholes all the time is going to be quite a thing. Now, is this extension of the black line that you do have, is that going to, is there going to be any modification or changes in that in order to meet where the junctions can be for the cables to, for the actual power to go in the ground?
Yeah, so this is the area that we want to concentrate on actually undergrounding, but in order to underground this, there are certain ties that happen at these key intersections. They'll have to drop back to, say, a pole mid-block and actually start their undergrounding there to be able to tie in. There's also transmission mains, which are, which are your high voltage power lines. And let's see if I have a shot of it real quick. So this pole here to the, to the left is a transmission main. We cannot underground that, but all of these poles here, the, the ones that actually have the distribution lines that are running, this one, all of those can be underground as well as the drops to the different, to the different businesses. So this funding would actually cover all of the costs, including the cost of those, to those businesses that are within. I think it's 100 feet of the main line, so this would not come at any cost to those adjacent properties.
And I, and I, the, the CGI is amazing. Don't know what you had to pay for that, but that's.
Yeah, no, that one, just sort of like the dance move. That one's, those ones come free.
If we have no other comments or questions yet, I'll open this up for public comment before we bring it back. Do we have any public comment on this?
Oh, that?
On this only, item number nine only.
I guess I suppose I'm a bit curious that this funding has accumulated since the 1960s and the county has not been able to come up with any kind of project to expend the funds prior to now. And that it would appear what the city's talking about is not necessarily something that would alleviate the problems that we have in Delnart County where lines that are above ground are, they tend to be difficult to maintain. They tend to be situations that often result in power outages. And the city is concerned about aesthetics on Front Street. It seems to be a bit of an oxymoron in terms of the use of the funding and that I'm almost embarrassed that the county has not been able to find a project in the confines of the county to expend the funded, funding well before now. They wait till the last moment and here we are in a mess and we're going to expend the funding on what clearly is not a hugely essential project that the city is currently undertaking, that it's more for aesthetics than actual hardening of our electric system against storms and the like. Thank you very much, county.
The only thing I can say to that is, is that it's going to be nice to get those poles down because they get hit a lot. I mean, I can tell you how many accidents that, that I've caught, you know, over the years, pulled off cars off of those, off those poles just because that S curve tends to be overdriven too many times. And so getting those poles off will, will help, not only for the aesthetics of things, but also getting them off of our, our, these curves that we've got there that tend to draw some traffic.
Any other public comment? I will close it. Supervisor Short?
With that, Chair, I would like to motion that we approve and adopt resolution number 2025-010 as stated in item nine.
I will second.
We have a motion. We have a second. County, which pulls up?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys for that. And seeing now, we are moving on to our scheduled timed items, our 10:25 public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within its jurisdiction of the board. You are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda. You may be asked to hold your comments till the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Have any public comment?
Good morning. So I attended the economic summit event and there were two parts to that that I really enjoyed. One was listening to Senator McGuire. I didn't realize, you know, how much work he actually does. And the other one was, Eric, where I think he stole the show. He showed us what's going on with the city and how many accomplishments they've made and what they're getting ready to do. And I enjoyed that. I was a little disappointed that the county didn't have anybody to represent the county. So we don't know what's going on with the county. I mean, even the Harvard made a presentation, which, you know, never mind. But the last thing is I'm very upset and sad to hear of something that transferred, that transpired this weekend. And I'm going to give you my phone number, 707-951-3048. If there is anybody in our community that is an employee at the county, the city, and does, has had a little bit too much to drink, please call me. I don't care what time it is. I will come pick you up. Please don't drive. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I see the public is here in force today. I think it was about a year ago where the city or the, the board that's here in front of me received a presentation on addressing the abysmal cell phone service in the county with regards to a tower out at the end of, you know, it's out in District Four. In any event, it's been a year and I, I can hardly believe that the cell so, cell phone service has gotten worse over the course of the year to the point where I cannot make a cell phone call from my residence and understand who's talking to me on the other end. It's to the point where I'm fortunate that I have a landline and that if I had an emergency, I could actually contact somebody. I dread the possibility of some elderly folk who depend on their cell phones and will not be able to get some kind of healthcare service and actually die from the lack of movement by the county in, in order to get some sort of functional cell service in the county. Beyond that, I did attend the meeting at the Paragon Cafe in which I met, well, not necessarily met, but was allowed to address our most recently elected Assembly member. And I think that for the five of you, pardon the fact that Supervisor Howard is not here, it's a match made in heaven where he believes that the most important feature of his representation for Delnart County is to advocate for doing something about cockfighting in the state of California. And this was a real eye-opener going to that particular meeting and all of the things that he stood for that pretty clearly the bulk of the country no longer favors. So like I say, it is a match made in heaven for this particular board and that Assembly member. I could barely believe some of the things that he was advocating for. And I did spend some time actually going back through and seeing some of his positions prior to being elected and was astonished by all the things that he was promoting that simply are not functional and do not work and lack complete common sense in terms of their employment in government. I suspect, at least in my case, he's a very poor representative for Delnart County. And had he not, had he only run in Delnart County, he would not be our Assemblyman. Thank you very much.
... A brand platform that...
Okay. Is there any other public comments? Come on down.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rick Coltra. My wife and I, or my wife Becky and I live at 3225 Rayward Avenue in Crescent City off of Malone Road. And we've been trying for years, as far back as Jerry Hemmingson, to, to get a bridge fixed down that road because it's, it's been a failing bridge forever. And, and we've talked with Dean and we've talked with Joey, or my wife did, but we can't get any response back on this, on this problem. And if you guys can't help us, then at least lead us to somebody that can help us as far as fishing game or whoever, because we, we can't really touch it because it is a creek and everybody knows that, you know, you have to go through all the legal channels to get stuff like that fixed. So is there anybody that knows anything about this or any way that we can be sent in the right direction to get this problem fixed?
Could we refer him to our county engineer?
Yeah, so John Olson would be a good start. We can get you in contact with him. I've been in contact with the Smith River Alliance trying to do the creek, you know, fish restoration process. It's, it's just everything is so slow. So I guess if you want to stop in and maybe set up an appointment with John Olson, maybe we can get that started, see if he has any ideas. I know the city has a water main that runs through there to see if, you know, maybe they can help out.
Yeah, because we've, we've had two, two water mains or two services put in on that road and, I mean, we, and we don't even get notified. We come back and you can't get down the road because there's equipment down there. And I mean, it is a narrow road and I get it. There's only two residents that live down there and it, you know, it seems like it's, it's a lot, but, you know, this has been going on. My dad fixed that bridge years ago and, I mean, it's, it's held up this long, but it, you know, it's failing, like I say, and pretty soon there won't be any access in there. And last week I had the power company come in to try to do some work, you know, on our lines to the house and they're leery of coming down there as well. So, I mean, we have to get something done because we can't get any kind of services down to our property to, in the event that we need them, you know? It's frustrating.
I've, I've gone into the creek that you're talking about, the bridge. I've got all the pictures. I've sent them off. It doesn't, I know it doesn't feel like anything's happening, but a lot trying at least behind the scenes.
Right, yeah. Well, just that, you know, a callback every once in a while would help, you know, updates. But, you know, the, that, the big bridge is actually a slough more than, it's not actually Jordan Creek. So it, I mean, it, it did, there are fish that come up it, but it's, it's like they could put in the, the half culverts to where they could just put half culverts in and then concrete it all in and it would be done for 100 years, you know?
Yeah, and I, I have had conversations with, with John, our engineer, about this. He reached out to the city because primarily we have no need for the bridge, bridges in ours. However, the city does use that bridge in order to service their water system out there. And unfortunately, in the conversations that he's had with the city, the city is unwilling to do anything as far as monetarily to, to repair or fix or maintain that bridge. And so at this point in time, the other issue is the cost associated with that bridge, given the length of it and the weight of the necessary support that would have to go into developing that. It's cost prohibitive at this point in time for the county to, to take on that, that project. But, you know, feel free, feel free to talk to John and, and maybe he has other recommendations that he can, he can provide to the residents down there.
Right, yeah, because it is, it actually is county-owned property. So, I mean, I would think they would be obligated to do something to make it safe for people to go up and down that road. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks. John Olson.
Olson, right? Cross the hall.
I just texted. I'm on your mic.
Any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment and move on to our 10:30 timed item, the Visitor Bureau Update. Cindy Bosberg.
It's a pleasure to be here. In addition to wearing the Executive Director hat for the Crescent City Delnart Chamber of Commerce, I'm also the Executive Director for the Delnart Visitor Bureau. The Bureau was formed in 2006 and is funded by TOT Taxes, which is a transient occupancy tax paid by those who stay in our lodging facilities. The city and the county collect these funds and pass on over to the Visitor Bureau some of the monies which we use to market Delnart County to the world. Our mission statement is to bring the next new visitor to Delnart County. We team up with an expert in destination marketing. But before I introduce you to Lynette Brayler, let me tell you about something quite exciting that has happened. A regional strategic tourism plan was conducted by Visit California. This was a two-year project and until bringing the consultants in multiple times to meet with stakeholders such as Ocean World, Trees of Mystery. They attended a couple of our mixers. They went out to, you know, Howland Hill and Grover Titans and explored the whole county. So the regional strategic tourism plan that was conducted by Visit California ranked the top 30 events, among other things, the top 30 events in the North Coast region, which consists of Humboldt Lake, Mendocino, and Delnart Counties. It looked at 11 different indicator points, which included nights lodging, when someone comes to visit for the event, the quality of the event, what type of event it was, when it was held, shoulder season, or in the peak of summer, and the people who attended, how many people attended. Of the top 30 events that they ranked, the number one event was the Fourth of July Deck Party as far as hitting all these indicators. The number two event was the festivities in the park and the fireworks, the, the professional fireworks. Number three was the Mendocino Music Festival and number four was our Independence Day Parade. So of the top, of the 30 events that they ranked and graded, we got three of the top four here in Delnart County. Our Kimomi Festival showed up in the list. Sea Cruise was number 16, which isn't a bad showing for an event of that size. We beat out, you know, the Oyster Fest and every other event, even the Wealth Festival in, in Fort Bragg with the Fourth of July events. So I'm quite excited about that and it kind of makes it a little bit more motivating. And now let me introduce you to my friend and colleague, Lynette Brayler. As the founder and creator, Creative Director for Lulish, a full-service destination marketing agency with over 25 years of hands-on marketing experience within the hospitality and tourism industries, including leading and building many destination marketing and management organizations from the ground up. Lynette's superpower is keeping a keen eye on the ever-changing trends that connect, that create connections and inspire visitors to go places and buy things. She's produced record-breaking strategies, campaigns, and room tax collections for a variety of Oregon, Washington, and California cities, counties, and regional DMOs. She started the Visit Delnart County brand and launched the website in April of 2019. Clients include North of Ordinary, California, which is the North Coast Tourism Council in those four counties I speak of, Visit Central Oregon... in those four counties I speak of, Visit Central Oregon, Olympic Tourism Commission, and Visitor Bureau, Visit Port Angeles, Visit Ben, Visit Redmond, and Visit McMinnville and more. And now here's Lynette.
Thank you for having us again to present our annual report on all the things, all the wonderful things we've accomplished with the leadership of our VB Committee and of course, all of our tourism partners, all the attractions, lodging, restaurants, and community members. So we can go ahead and start. We're gonna start with a couple videos.
A brand platform that wasn't just a campaign, but a movement. We embrace the full spectrum of what makes California stand apart, the energy, the diversity, and endless opportunities for adventure and self-expression. Let's take a look at the campaigns that shared the Ultimate Playground with the world over the past year.
... There ain't a problem. I thank my mom and my... Beach mom!
There it is. Beach mom!
Find your ultimate playground at visitcalifornia.com.
Okay. That's okay. Okay, I have to say, when you're standing there and you're watching the screen, do you know how easy it would be just to leap into those seats? Like, yes, 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 no matter, no wonder it's working. I mean, it's truly working and the message is resonating powerfully with visitors. Last year, Visit California's marketing generated $31.5 billion in incremental visitor spending. Our Let's Play campaign achieved the highest ad recall in Visit California's history. This isn't just about tourism. It's about California's brand, a beacon of innovation, creativity, and freedom.
So I just wanted to highlight that Visit California, it had been, it's our Visitor Bureau Committees, you know, has been one of the things that since I started with the Visitor Bureau and our committee is to get more exposure from Visit California. And definitely being part of this campaign with our tribal partners and the UROC for this campaign was amazing. And it was their most successful campaign to date, which is incredible. And then along with that, that entire campaign was backed by a $33 million global media budget. So we will move on just to a couple other videos and then we'll get on with our main video presentation.
Tucked into the Six Rivers National Forest in Delnort County, California is the Scenic Highway 199, where views of the wild Smith River Canyon culminate with a front seat view of redwood tree groves in Jedidiah Smith Redwood State Park. Make a plan to float, fish, or frolic along the pristine Emerald Waters of the Smith River. The Smith River and our Redwoods National Parks will capture your heart. Plan your trip at visitdelnortcounty.com. Chill out on the cool coast in Delnort County, California, just south of the Oregon border. Make a plan to sway 100 feet above a redwood forest floor. Paddle a hand-carved redwood canoe down the Klamath, or make a big splash into the Smith River. Our cool ocean beaches, wild rivers, and redwood national parks will capture your heart. Make a plan to chill this summer at visitdelnortcounty.com.
And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing we've done. And then you also have a full printed report of the last year that goes into more details and shows everything that we've been done, we've been working on. And then finally, we're just gonna play a quick video of highlights of the marketing
And I think that could bring some interest up here, especially since we just had Expedition Bigfoot up here filming on the Klamath River. But I'm not sure if they were aware of all that information, but I think it could bring a lot of Bigfoot enthusiasts up here, too. I know some people think it's a joke and it's fake, but hey, it's fine. It attracts tourists. So I don't know, that just popped in my head because that Bigfoot is huge. You see it everywhere. It merchandises everywhere. I think, and like I said, that is one of the most famous Bigfoot videos ever taken. So I think, you know, bringing that up every once in a while wouldn't hurt anything, but that's just my two cents.
Great idea. And if you guys would like to come back and address any of the comments?
So thank you very much for all of those comments. And we do, Lynette does a great job marketing our stormy season and it's called Storm Watching. And, you know, Banden has been successful with that as well. But we've been doing that for a while with some storm watching ads that run throughout the stormy months, so.
Just one thing to add, too. We do promote the California, our redwoods as the only rainforest in California, trying to encourage people to come here when it is raining and enjoy the redwoods. And then also, majority of our campaigns, we back off quite a bit in summer because we know we're at capacity. So we are working year round to try to get people here in the slower seasons, so.
And as far as Bigfoot goes, we've actually been approached by our new city council member, Councilman Dooley, about the Bigfoot film and perhaps somehow setting up a Bigfoot exhibit or expanding on that. And so that's actually, has been some conversation on it. And we sell quite a bit of Bigfoot merchandise out of our visitor center, because the parks won't sell Bigfoot, Bigfoot aren't allowed to sell Bigfoot merchandise, so. Thank you.
Great. And I've, I've heard he really comes out during the storms here, so.
I guess.
You can push that.
You can hear his howl over the storming.
Come on up, Sam. We're having fun. Come on up.
One of the highlights of my most recent trip was to get up in the middle of the night and watch lightning storms out over the ocean was really quite entertaining. I mean, sometimes they would go on for several hours and was really quite a spectacular, I mean, better than fireworks almost. And then the other thing, our illustrious new Assembly member is trying to usurp our, our stake to Bigfoot and move it south into Sonoma County. So I would suggest that you get after him about that.
Very good point.
Save Bigfoot.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys so much. Okay. We're gonna jump back down to our very short consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
I see that, yes, you've trimmed it down quite a little bit, but the whole calendar is trimmed down quite a little bit. And I would hope not to, to allow the board to skinny out of here before 11 o'clock. Anyway, in order to kind of break the logjam, because you don't appear to be hearing me, that general business for the county shouldn't be on the consent agenda. I don't know any government agency, at least in this county, that utilizes the consent agenda the way you do and that your lack of transparency is not a particularly good look for the county. So I will take on one of perhaps the, I'm sorry to Director Brown, but I'll take on one of her items on the consent agenda, number five, in which I'm pleased to see that actually some numbers in terms of cost are appearing, at least in that particular item. And numbers are there as well. But what concerns me, I suppose, is the Department of Health and Human Services spends a tremendous amount of money that are taxpayer monies. And they do it for programs that, well, even if we were to get the numbers that were involved in the particular program, the contract and the cost, I think we're talking about 55 people in a county of 26,000 and a cost of, I believe it was 250,000 with a cap of 416,000. Lot of money to spend on a program. But as I've said before, before this council, that we've become, we've become almost a county that is an industry for, at the time I characterized it as dysfunctional people, I've been corrected by the illustrious union rep, Norma Williams, that Health and Human Services is saving people. What concerns me is we don't know exactly how successful any of these programs are and whether any people have actually been saved. And by moving these particular items to general business, at least we wouldn't have to have, you know, upwards of two dozen people in here focusing on each item on the consent agenda to kind of unravel what we're talking about here and have a little bit more transparency. So again, I urge the Board of Supervisors to reconsider the three minute limitation on consent agenda. And if you can't do that, move a vast majority of these items to the general business item or the general vision, business portion of the agenda where at least there would be some way of eliminating some of the failed portions of the consent agenda. Thank you.
So usually, in my opinion, I don't know, I could be wrong, consent agenda items are, items have already been previously heard at another meeting. And so maybe it would help if you could put the date of that meeting and that it was open to the public, because that's what you're, it's already been heard in a public forum and so that's what you're approving. And if you can't put the date of that meeting, then that kind of tells us that it hasn't been heard in a public forum and it needs to be on a regular agendized item. And I could be wrong, Council, but I don't know. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Council, would you have, be able to kind of address the consent agenda at all?
The consent agenda is a public item. Every single item that's on the consent agenda is found on the, the big agenda and the board, there's a board report for every one of those items. And it is a public hearing. It's just, these items have been determined to not be controversial. Anything can get pulled by one of the board members if they want to pull it. But yeah, it's, it is a public meeting. They are public items. It's just, for efficiency purposes, that's why we use it.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Move to approve and I'll second.
Kylie, we have a motion, we have a second.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us down to budget transfers. Item number 10, approve, approve and adopt budget transfer number 04-03 in the amount of 25,000 within the 101-231 Sheriff Office Budget Unit to cover the cost of post academy for one deputy and a recertification of two deputies as part of the recruitment efforts to fill vacancies as requested by the sheriff. Item number 11, approve and adopt budget transfer number 04-05 in the amount of $46,627 within the Office of Emergency Services Budget Unit as requested by the Fiscal Manager, Office of Emergency Services. And number 12, approve and adopt budget transfer 04-06 in the amount of $149,403 within the Miscellaneous Revenue and Expense Budget as requested by the County Administrative Officer Audit Controller Fiscal Manager for the Office of Emergency Services.
I will move that we approve and adopt budget transfer 04-03, 04-05, and 04-06.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment?
I'm pleased to see that with respect to item 10, that the county is actually making some movement to assist the sheriff in at least providing minimal coverage in the county with regards to addressing the abysmal lack of safety in the county, primarily due to the fact that the sheriff no longer has the manpower to adequately service the county. I'm just wondering how long he's gonna be able to keep the three people that you're currently authorizing the expense for, because it doesn't seem like, at the rate of pay that patrol officers receive in this county, that he's able to do much about retaining officers. So I'm wondering how soon it will be before he's back to the current staffing level of, I believe it's 10 on the patrol side. I think he said something in the neighborhood of nine on the incarceration, the jail side, in which, in some cases, when he has to spell people on the day shot, on the jail side, he has to remove patrol officers off of their duties to cover that mandatory lapse. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, close it. Kylie, would you pull a vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, our final item, legislative and budget issues. Item number 13, receive copies of letters provided to the state legislator from the Director of Health and Human Services per section 1.60 of the administrative manual as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. And those letters have been received. Okay? Any public comment on those items? Number 13? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting to our next meeting, May 13.